Pursuant to applicable law in my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is conducted by video conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. Will the alderman please make sure that your microphones are unmuted when your call? You need not unmute ahead of time. Thank you, and Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good morning, everyone. Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman Dow is here. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Zulaski Garza. Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness.
Present.
Alderman Cardness is present. Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Quinn is present. Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Burke is present. Alderman Lopez.
Absolutely present.
Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis.
Here.
Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Taylor is present. Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez.
Present.
Alderman Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Scott is present. Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Sichu Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado.
Here.
Alderman Maldonado is present. Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Burnett is present. Alderman Urban.
Is in the house.
Alderman Urban is present. Alderman Taliaferro.
Present.
Alderman Taliaferro is present. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Wagispak.
Here.
Alderman Wagispak is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
N. Santa.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alderman Vegas.
Present.
Alderman Vegas is present. Alderman Metz.
Present.
Alderman Metz is present. Alderman Spazado.
Here.
Alderman Spazado is present. Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Vasquez.
Present.
Alderman Vasquez is present. Alderman Napolitano.
Present.
Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Smith is present. Alderman Tony.
Present.
Alderman Tony is present. Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Kapelman.
Present.
Alderman Kapelman is present. Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Martin is present. Alderman Osterman.
Present.
Alderman Osterman is present. Alderman Hadden.
Present.
Alderman Hadden is present. Alderman Silverstein.
Present.
Alderman Hairston is present.
Alderman Silverstein is present. Alderman Hairston is present. Okay, one at a time. Alderman Laspada is present. Alderman Hopkins, are you here?
No, that was Alderman Hairston.
Alderman Hairston.
Alderman Harris.
Alderman Zulaski Garza, I see you.
Still here.
Alderman Riley is here.
Alderman Sawyer is present. Alderman Riley is present.
Alderman Coleman is present.
Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman King is present. Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk.
Alderman Raboyas is present.
Alderman King is present. Alderman King, I have you. Alderman King and Alderman Raboyas, I have you. Anyone else? All right. Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
There being a quorum present, we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
States of America.
America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, and justicious, and moral.
Thank you. And at this time, please remain standing. The invocation will be delivered by Pastor Earl Granberry of the True Rock Ministries. Pastor?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Father in Jesus' name, Lord, as we come to this meeting, we pray, God, that you would lead in God us today, Father, for the safety of the people, the health of the people, and the financial well-being of the people. We pray, God, that you allow this council be one today. Let everyone do unto others as they want them to do unto you. We pray that you would bless this meeting, oh, God, and you would get the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we will have public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Today's first speaker is Caitlin Savato.
Hello?
Hello.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Caitlin Savato. I'm a 13-year-old activist and organizer. I know you folks have been discussing numbers and statistics for a few days now, so I'll try to distance myself from that because we all know the numbers. We know the statistics. We know that study after study shows that investing into our youth programs, social programs, mental health, our environment, et cetera, reduces crime far more than policing in prisons. So I could sit here and discuss numbers with you all, but that wouldn't mean anything because I could tell you that in 2016, an investigation from the Chicago Tribune reported that every five days on average, a Chicago police officer fired a gun at someone. 435 shootings, 2,623 bullets, 92 deaths. And you would hear that report as a statistic. This body has normalized the capitalist complex system of white supremacy. We have normalized the struggles of our black and brown communities. So while we all sit here in this conference call, those numbers are rising. People are dying and lives are being taken. So I ask you, even after studies show that investing into our communities, our children, our environment, our future reduces crime, why do we continue to pour more money into the system that is killing us? You can also claim that reforming is a far better solution, but you cannot reform an institution of racism. We have been asking you, from Chad Robertson to Betty Jones, to Cherokee Boyd to Laquan McDonald, we have asked you. But you know what? We are tired of asking because I wake up and another black man is dead. I wake up and I see indigenous people suffering on their own land. I wake up and I see children being put into cages. You all wake up, you look at those numbers. Sure, you may reflect on it, but you don't live it. You don't experience it. Have you ever noticed that if you take a drive down Western Avenue, you see two entirely different cities? I grew up in the Beverly, Mount Greenwood area, the 19th Ward, and you know, I'd walk 7-Eleven with my friends. But if you take a little drive down to Dan Ryan, or maybe you might take the streets, there's no guarantee, and you walk on 63rd and King Drive, or 65th, there's no guarantee that you are walking out alive. That is nothing new. But to be blind to the suffering of the citizens of the city, I then question, what is the job here, honestly? As a kid, I'm told to sit back and let the adults handle this. So now I look to you, adults, and I'm asking you, when will you start to invest into our communities? You know those signs that we see in places where construction is being done? Building a better Chicago. It's no coincidence that we usually see these signs in predominantly white neighborhoods. It is no coincidence that last year, we saw $1 billion increase in CPD's budget while mental health services only saw $3 million increase. So now, I'm speaking in front of you, a 13-year-old, telling you to invest into education, jobs, housing, mental health programs, healthcare, our environment, and other social programs for all people in the city of Chicago. Defund the racist institution that lives within our neighborhoods. And if this does not happen, and we decide to hurt our communities once again, we will hold those accountable because this is not radical, it's not socialist.
Thank you, Ms. Savato. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mr. Larry Dowling.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, and City Council members. My name is Father Larry Dowling, pastor for 14 years at St. Agatha Kelly Church in North Lyndale. I serve on the U.S. Use of Force Task Force that just recommended 155 substantive and meaningful changes to CPD policies, where only five were accepted by CPD and affirmed by the mayor. St. Agatha is a longtime member church of the Community Renewal Society, one of the groups who for over four years now has pressed for the passage of the GAPA ordinance. There is no question that our city needs to address the dysfunction within CPD. We all know that. We continue to witness the abuses against black people and other people of color, people with disabilities, and LGBTQ+ persons. We continue to witness the abuse of protesters by some police, and we continue to witness the denial of the legal right to phone call for anyone arrested and the holding of many protesters and others incommunicado in places like CPD's Dark Site and Holman Square. I along with my priesters and the many people I work with in North Lyndale need the city council to take substantive action addressing all of these abuses. Today, I want to speak because it is particularly pressing for me to pass the ordinance presented by GAPA. Forty percent of city budget goes to CPD, and there are no structures out for community to have a voice and hold officers and CPD as a whole accountable. The GAPA ordinance creates a way for community to have legitimate input on policing and how police resources are used. This oversight includes a community commission that brings accountability at all levels of policing, forces transparency, and most importantly, allows the community to drive what's best for public safety. Yet the mayor is proposing more of the same, and we know that's not working. The mayor wants to give the trump card, which means CPD will have no reason to work with the community commission as equal partner. We want to ensure that police department policy reflects police department expertise, national best practices, and community values, that the mayor holds the trump card that any future mayor and a future police superintendent join together to shut the community out. The mayor keeping the trump card maintains the status quo, which we know from the DOJ report, the ATF report, and consent decree, that caused terrible harm to both civilians and police officers. The mayor just notes the truth by saying that GAPA has not come forward with a proposal that solves some outstanding issues. We have worked tirelessly to bring the community voice to the table. We will continue to fight for communities by advocating for the strongest civilian oversight body in the nation. In light of all that has occurred over the past several months, we have revised our ordinance, reflect the need for police accountability that our communities are demanding. We have never stopped advocating for our ordinance. We have made it clear, Mayor, to us that you are not really to work with us to create the change that we need in Chicago right now. You will say that you will not support a GAPA ordinance to give the commission final policy drafting authority and the ability to issue a vote of no confidence. This is unacceptable. We do not want a shell of an ordinance that does not position the city to be.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ms. Ariad Bernstein.
Good morning. My name is Ariad Bernstein. I'm a fifth-generation Chicago South Sider and a resident of the 15th Ward. The council today engages in the critical task of passing a budget in this most dire year, forcing us to look hard at our priorities and our weight. As the mayor cries poor mouth and the council considers draconian cuts to desperately needed public services, over $1.7 billion has been spent annually on the police, who profoundly do not serve or protect the residents and communities most vulnerable and in need of service. We've been paying for an outside occupying force that cultivates violence. The lawlessness of the police can be captured by the approximately $50 million the city has to budget every year to pay in legal settlements for police brutality. Yes, we desperately and obviously need a serious reduction in funding for the police. Defund should animate deliberations today. But let's not forget another issue on which Mayor Lightfoot ran but has obstructed in office: community oversight. For whatever size the CPD will be, it cannot continue to be a self-regulating, state-funded crime syndicate. It has long been time to pass meaningful civilian oversight of CPD. I implore the mayor to stop obstructing and the council to stop delaying and pass the GAPA ordinance ASAP. Under GAPA, a grassroots ordinance created and driven by community members and organizations, the police superintendent, COPA chief, and police board members are only chosen with approval of community members on the citywide commission, commissioners who have relevant work or lived experience and who also play a central role in removing those police leaders when necessary. Under GAPA, the community commission can require the police superintendent, COPA chief, and police board members to testify publicly and answer questions, and it has full access to information, documents, and records from CPD, COPA, and the police board. GAPA is the only ordinance in the council in which the community commission has the authority to write policy for the police department and COPA and has final authority over that policy. GAPA is the only ordinance in the council with democratically elected district councils, empowering Chicagoans in every single police district to improve community safety and increase accountability in their home community. GAPA creates this robust civilian oversight without vulnerability to being struck down in court when the petty and desperate police department inevitably sues. GAPA creates elections in line with current state law and can be passed by city council without a change in state law or citywide referendum. The time is now. Pass GAPA.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Our next speaker is Mr. Carlos Pittman.
Good morning. My name is Carlos Pittman, and I'm a supporter of the Grassroots Alliance for Police Accountability. I support GAPA because for far too long, our city has put all the authority and power on the side of the police. And we finally have an opportunity to pass an ordinance that creates real accountability to police misconduct and an opportunity for growth and cohesion between the police and the community. As a young black man from the Inglewood community, I'm seeing firsthand how the old ways of policing have negatively affected my community. With all that is happening in our city and our country with policing and the movement for black lives, we have the opportunity to be the leaders of change with a powerful ordinance that brings real change. GAPA is that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Our next speaker is Esther Black.
Good morning. My name is... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Karina Storga, and I am a community organizer on the southwest side of Chicago and a resident of the 15th Ward. Being a female, a person of color, having undocumented family, and as a young Latina woman, I've seen the different ways that policing has affected my community. GAPA has spent years collecting data from communities across the city. Meeting with experts and public officials has had the most powerful and transformational ordinance to address police misconduct. GAPA creates opportunities for relationships between police and communities to grow. It gives the community the opportunity to have actual authority in policing and misconduct. We are demanding that Alderman Taliaferro calls GAPA for a vote because the city needs this change now more than ever. Historically, when it comes to policing, the city of Chicago has not seen anything as powerful and transformative as the GAPA ordinance. And we have the power to make history as a city who took the best steps towards real accountability and community oversight. GAPA is a step we need to take. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes public comment resolutions. This is the next item on the agenda. Today, we have a congratulatory retirement resolution for Andrea Tully. Alderman Mitchell, are you on?
Yes, I am.
And do you have a motion to temporarily suspend other rules for the immediate consideration of this resolution?
Yes, Madam President. I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of this resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Would you like me to read it, Mayor?
Yes, you can read the resolution.
Whereas while we greatly miss her, the members of this body are pleased to congratulate Andrea Tully on her retirement as Commissioner of Chicago Public Library on August 31st, 2020, after nearly 30 years of exemplary service with the library system. And whereas Commissioner Tully was born and raised in Chicago, she received a bachelor's degree in Spanish from Drake University, a master's degree in Spanish literature from Georgetown University, and a master's degree in library science from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. And whereas in 1991, Commissioner Tully began her career with Chicago Public Library in the Special Collections and Preservation Division, where she helped to showcase rare and unique materials focusing on the history of Chicago. And whereas in her time in Chicago Public Library, Commissioner Tully served as a manager of the Humboldt Park Branch Library, Central District Chief, Assistant Commissioner of Neighborhood Services, and Deputy Commissioner of Public Services. And whereas Mayor Lloyd Lightfoot appointed Commissioner Tully to the position of Commissioner of Chicago Public Library effective June 15, 2019, during Commissioner Tully's tenure, Chicago Public Library eliminated fines for overdue materials and expanded Sunday hours, increasing resident access to the library system and city services. And whereas managing an annual budget of $130 million, Commissioner Tully oversaw numerous capital projects dedicated to ensuring that city neighborhoods have access to state-of-the-art, safe places to read and learn. And whereas Commissioner Tully administrated one of the largest library systems in the United States with three regional hubs, 77 neighborhood branches, and the system's flagship, Central Library, the Harold Washington Library Center. And whereas a recognized champion of urban libraries, Commissioner Tully will enjoy retirement with her husband, a fellow librarian, whom she met during her time in the Special Collections and Preservation Division. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this day, we, the mayor, and the members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assemble this sixth day of November, 2020, to hereby congratulate Andrea Tully on the occasion of her retirement and commend her for remarkable leadership over our great library system within the city of Chicago. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Andrea Tully as a token of our appreciation and esteem.
Are there members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Madam President. Andrea, I wish you nothing but the best. I see you there with an ear-to-ear smile on your face, and it looks like you're in a room with your husband, looking back and forth to him. So.
And my mom, too.
And your mom, too. So, Mom, you raise a damn good daughter, let me tell you. What a great person and a real sweetheart, and I appreciate her lead on the library and all the efforts they've done for our community, also her friendship. I used to be Andrea's alderman until she was ripped away from me 10 years ago. But Andrea, I just wish you nothing but the best, and I hope you enjoy retirement. You're a little too young to retire, so I'm sure you'll find yourself finding something to do, whether your charitable works, but just keep busy, keep well, and a pleasure to know you, and I appreciate all the efforts you've done for this city. Thank you very much, and best wishes to you.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazado. The chair recognizes Alderman Tom Tony.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I tried to call you on your cell phone, but probably missed you. Maybe you don't want to talk to Alderman for a while. Maybe you're on vacation. I just wanted to compliment you on our work together and the mayor's work with the Merlot Library. It was a near and dear project for the community, and working with PBC and your office made it reassuringly like this project is going to happen. And we opened it with the mayor in the pandemic. It's just such an asset to our neighborhood, and the fact that we were able to renovate a WPA building that in a lot of our community's mind looked like a doctor's office with the glass that covered the beautiful architecture. So I just wanted to wish you well. As Alderman Spazado said, I'm sure you and your husband have either a lot of enjoyment or another career. I wish that we had you longer. I'll just say that. And be well, be safe, and thank you for all you did for the Lakeview community.
Thank you, Alderman Tony.
Thank you, Alderman Tony. The chair recognizes Alderman Silverstein.
Good morning, Andrea.
Good morning, Alderman Silverstein.
We worked so closely together on our new Northtown Library, and it was such a pleasure working together with you, and I'm really going to miss you. I want to wish you much, much good luck. And just thank you for helping make it a smooth sailing, as smooth as it could be, and for opening up that beautiful, beautiful library. And I myself am really going to miss you, so good luck.
Thank you very, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Alderman Silverstein. The chair recognizes Alderman Taliaferro.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and really want to congratulate... Hold on one second. I apologize. I really want to congratulate Commissioner Tully on her retirement, and I hope that you enjoy your retirement, Commissioner. You've earned it. You've done a great job with the city and with libraries as well. We worked hard on trying to bring a library to the Gilwood neighborhood. Unfortunately, it didn't happen, but we're going to keep pushing to bring a library up there. And I want to thank you so much for the many conversations. Some of them tough, but I want to thank you for the many conversations that we had and the effort that you put into trying to bring a library there. I hope you're still up in the 29th Ward, and I hope to see you really soon.
I'm sitting in the house that I grew up in, on the same street that I live on. So my family, my mom still lives here. We still live here. I have no plans on going anywhere, so.
We have some great development up there. We'd like your input on it. And so please join us at some of our community meetings.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, Alderman Taliaferro.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to take a few moments. We oftentimes don't have the opportunity to thank our public servants. Thank you, Commissioner Tully, for your work. I think one of the first commissioners that I had the pleasure to meet when I started in office. Your advocacy is obviously visible in the terms of how libraries have become, I think, more visible, and you're starting to prioritize the needs over families and children and people across the community, especially in the Latino minority communities, the South African-American communities. So thank you for your advocacy. I know in Chinatown, there's a beautiful library now, and also we hope to continue expanding hours, expanding programming, and more investment in our libraries. And I think we need to make sure that we give credit where credit is due. Thank you, Commissioner, and enjoy your retirement. Thank you for all you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, Commissioner. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Ward for your attention to the detail of restoring and upgrading the B Branch Library, which is a historic library in the library system. I wish you the best as you embark on your retirement. I wish you were staying, but congratulations and good luck to you in the future. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Brian Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner, congratulations to you. I think the highest praise you can give to any public servant is you leave this system in a much better place than you found it. Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. And Madam Clerk, please add me to the attendance roll call.
All right, last call for any other alderman who would like to speak to this resolution. I will add my own words to Andrea. I stand with this entire body of council to speak to this resolution. Like many of you on this call, Andrea is a personal friend and has been a support to me for twenty-plus years when I first met her at the library. We share a lot of the same goals, Andrea, one of which is leaving Chicago better than how we found it. Over the past thirty years, Andrea has worked tirelessly within our great library system to make our city a better place by ensuring that our libraries have everything that they need to serve and enrich our neighborhoods. I learned this from our prior library commissioner, Mary Dempsey, and from my wife. Libraries are the beachhead. When you go into a neighborhood with a library, you open up a world of possibilities, not only to the people who participate, but particularly to our children. Librarians lead them on a magical journey of learning and play such a critical role in really enriching the life of our communities and libraries. The many, many that were built previously under most of the daily administration have served as critical economic development tools. And any of you that were fortunate enough to receive one of those new libraries, you should know that Andrea and her team were the ones that made sure that the staffing was right, that the programming was right, and really responsive to the needs of communities. So Andrea, that is a lasting part of your legacy. I also want to highlight some of the things that Andrea accomplished in her tenure as Commissioner. Under her leadership, we eliminated library fines and fees, which brought so many people back to the library system. And that is, I think, a significant accomplishment under Andrea's leadership as the Commissioner of Libraries. We expanded Sunday hours and gave many communities another opportunity to participate in the libraries seven days a week and not just six. And Andrea also supported a number of capital projects dedicated to giving our neighborhoods safe, state-of-the-art library facilities to read, learn, and discover in. These efforts significantly increased residents' ability to utilize our library system and its services all across the city and complemented our citywide continuing efforts to break down barriers to make sure that our city is more inclusive and more equitable. And Andrea and her library team were at the forefront of this work. I also want to make sure that we recognize that Andrea and a number of librarians jumped to the ready at the early stages of the pandemic to help feed our residents so that their needs were met. And thank you again to Andrea and the library staff who participated in this incredibly important effort. Andrea, I hope you know, and I said this to you when you came to me, that you will be sorely missed. But I want you to know that the work that you've done over many, many years will have a lasting legacy. And the fact that you left in part to put your mom and your family first is really a testament to who you are. A devoted daughter, a great sister and wife, and a tremendous public servant to our city. So on behalf of our entire city, I want to personally thank you for your leadership and congratulations, and well-deserved retirement. I know that retirement is a bit of a misnomer. I look for you to be part of the life of our city. And tell your mom that we wish her well and God bless. Thank you so much. And Nick Spazado was right. You raised a hell of a daughter, and you should be very proud. But thank you very much, Andrea. And is there a motion to allow?
Motion to allow Andrea to speak.
Thank you. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Andrea, you've been given the privilege of the floor. To the floor is yours.
Well, oh my goodness. Well, thank you. I'm just overwhelmed by everyone's good wishes. I have really always defined myself as a neighborhood girl. As I mentioned, I'm sitting in the same house that my mom and my dad brought me home from in the hospital, from the hospital when I was born fifty-seven years ago. So I'm so steeped in Chicago and so steeped in the neighborhood that I live in and in the neighborhoods all across the city of Chicago. And working at the library was an honor and it was a pleasure. And it was both something that appealed to me intellectually, but also me emotionally as well. It's the library system and the city is part of my DNA. I'll always be a supporter of the library. I'll always be a supporter of Chicago and of all the good work that the mayor and that all of you are doing. And I thank you very, very much for the honor of working with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion for passage of the resolution in the omnibus?
Madam President, I move passage of the resolution into the omnibus again.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion to return to the regular order of business?
I now move return to the regular order.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Madam Clerk, Communications.
A series of communications from or honor the mayor to the honor of the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the fiscal year 2021 tax levy. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the 2021 revenue ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a tax-exempt housing revenue bond for the redevelopment of Pacio Borica Arts. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chief Financial Officer, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation sales tax bonds. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the transfer of unused tax-exempt bond value cap to the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing tax increment financing funds to various small business improvement funds and amendment of the program Rules and Service Agreement. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing tax increment financing funds and the execution of an associated redevelopment agreement with the Greater Auburn Gresham Development Corporation. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the 2021 Management Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a resolution amending the salary resolution. Your favorable consideration of this resolution will be much appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the 2021 Code Corrections Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the allocation of motor fuel tax funds and authorizing the execution of an associated intergovernmental agreement, the Chicago Transit Authority. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of service provider agreements for and providing budgets to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a Class 7A tax status of property located at 6541 South Cicero. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Assets Information Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended lease agreement with 8700 Building LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a loan agreement and associated assistance for North Park Villa Apartments. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner on Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance extending the duration of the Near North, Near West, and Milwaukee Corridor pilot affordable requirements ordinances. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following document was filed in my office. Certificate pursuant to bond ordinance for issuance of Chicago-Hair International Airport, General Airports, a senior lien, and Revenue Refunding Bond Series 2020A, non-AMT, Series 2020B, non-AMT, private activity, Series 2020C, non-AMT, Series 2020D taxable, and Series 2020E, non-AMT. Sixth amended and reissued Department of Health Order Number 2020-5 concerning evening cessation of alcoholic liquor sales. Department of Health Order Number 2020-11 concerning nonessential business curfew. Amended and reissued Department of Health Order Number 2020-11 concerning nonessential business curfew. Inspector General's Audit Report Concerning Department of Human Resources Management of City Employee Evaluation Process. Inspector General's Evaluation of Chicago Police Department Post-Fireman Discharge Policy. Inspector General's Follow-Up Inquiry Regarding Department of Assets Information Services Management of Information Technology Investments. Inspector General's Follow-Up Inquiry Regarding Department of Assets Information Service Maintenance of Chicago Police Department Vehicle Fleet. And Inspector General's Quarter Report for Period ended August 34th, 31st, 2020. I City Clerk Valencia often form the City Council of all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on October 7th, 2020, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 16th, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the call for the special meeting and the matters considered by the City Council on October 21st, 2020, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on November 16th, 2020 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council of Chicago. I also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas, which refer to the Committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Claims against the City of Chicago, which refer to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Approval of Permit Application for Demolition of Non-Contributing Buildings at 4601-461 North Broadway in Uptown Square District. And recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Approval of Permit Application for demolition of non-contributing building at 4613-4617 North Broadway in Uptown Square District. Your Honor, that concludes Mayor and Clerk's communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on the agenda is committee reports. First committee, Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Vegas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on November 13th, 2020, the committee recommends passage of the following items. Items one through three are a series of appointments to various special service areas. Winston Fang to SSA Number 34 Uptown Commission, and Karen Nieto and Kendra Boyd to SSA Number 59, 59th Street Commission. If no one wishes to speak on these items, I move passage of these items by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zloski Garza. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness.
Alderman Zloski Garza is an aye.
Alderman Zloski Garza is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Siccho Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Siccho Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Revoyes.
Aye.
Alderman Revoyes is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Maguspack.
Aye.
Alderman Maguspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman.
Ramirez Rosa is an aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Alderman Mitz is an aye. Alderman Spazado.
Aye.
Alderman Spazado is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vazquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vazquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunney.
Aye.
Alderman Tunney is an aye. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye.
Sawyer is an aye.
Sawyer is an aye. Peter.
Your Honor, there are forty-nine yays and no nays.
Madam Chair.
There are forty-nine yays and no nays. The matter is passed. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
A motion that we reconsider that last vote?
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion for reconsideration is denied. Chairman Vegas.
Item four was a public hearing proposed City of Chicago Special Service Area Number 19. Item five was a public hearing with respect to proposed City of Chicago Special Service Area Number 54. Item six.
Item six was a public hearing with respect to proposed City of Chicago Special Service Area Number 75. Item seven was a public hearing with respect to proposed City of Chicago Special Service Area Number 76. Items four through seven were public hearings held pursuant to requirements of the State of Illinois Special Service Area Tax Law. Thirty-five ILCS 200 backslash twenty-seven dash five. From time to time in section twenty-seven dash thirty-five of the State of Illinois Special Service Area Tax Law as amended. No vote was taken during any of the public hearing, public hearings. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Vegas. Next, Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Chairman Smith.
Madam President and members of City Council, reporting for your Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a meeting on October 13, 2020. The committee considered one item, an ordinance, oh, oh, twenty-twenty dash twenty-three twenty-eight, amending municipal code section two dash one fifty-six dash three oh nine regarding permissible lobbying by elected officials. This ordinance received a do not pass recommendation from the committee by a roll call vote of zero yays and seventeen nays. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. Next up, the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Chairman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reporting on your committee from Health and Human Relations, which held a remote meeting on October 14, 2020. The committee recommends passage of the following item. The following item includes appointments to the Advisory Council of Women and on New Americans. The committee approved the following sixteen appointments. Lauren Simmons. Linda Zachtchuk. Ratika Gordon. Juan Yum. Tanika Jennings. Mabel Minard. Sarah Miranda. Barbara Manube. Jennifer Perea. Juro Palanco. Katerina Ramos. Alma Rodriguez. Diana Ruby. Janaiet Saruni. Leif Shahaban. And Alija Otak. I move passage of the following of this item by the first favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Economic and Capital Technology Development and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. The committee also held a subject matter hearing regarding an update on the city's actions in response to COVID-19.
Chairman. Chairman Sawyer, let us deal with the first item for which you.
Certainly.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Please proceed with the second item.
Thank you. The committee also held a subject matter hearing regarding an update on the city's actions in response to COVID-19. No votes were taken. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Sawyer. Next is the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council. Reporting for your committee on housing and real estate, which held a virtual meeting on October 22, 2020. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number one is the sale of city-owned property at 1138 North Christiana. 1142 North Christiana, 1702 North Monticello, 3724 West Lemoine. In parcel commonly known as 2341 West Erie to L and M C Investment LLC for affordable home redevelopment purposes in the 26th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Economic and Technology Development and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is the sale of city-owned property at 4346 dash 4348 South Martin Luther King Drive to Dansler Management Incorporated to develop a single-family home. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
No objection, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a substitute ordinance for an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority for exclusive license access use of city property adjacent to CTA operations for material storage yard at 3939 dash 3949 West Maypole Avenue. Twenty oh five dash twenty thirty-one North Pulaski Road. Twenty fifty-four dash twenty fifty-six North Harding. And 3942 dash 3944 West Maypole. And 3936 dash 3938 West Maypole. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item four is a First Amendment to Use Agreement with the Board of Trustees of the Community College District Number 508 for usage of office space at 400 West Superior slash 740 North Sedgwick. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is an intergovernmental agreement to acquire property for this, from the Chicago City, I'm sorry, Chicago Transit Authority at 4331 dash 4359 West Chicago Avenue for city's joint public safety training academy project and economic development in the 37th Ward. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate it. Today, this passage of this ordinance is going to allow for the acquisition of land for CTA to be sold to the city for ten dollars for the use of the outlots needed for two African-American-owned restaurants that would be on site of the Joint Public Safety Training Academy. These two African-American-owned restaurants, Peaches and Coopers, will not only serve the first responders that will be in the area each day once the Joint Public Safety Training Academy is open, but also the thousand of Westsiders residents that I represent. As this project continue to move forward, I continue to be excited for this much-needed longstanding investment in West Garfield Park and on the west side of Chicago. As Alderman, this project reflects my neighborhood priorities, which focus on strengthening the local 37th Ward economy by creating hundreds of jobs, supporting our infrastructure, and fostering a new opportunity to expand skill workforce opportunities for residents. In fact, Peaches will feature a training center for food and restaurant workers offered on the job, coaching, training employees on customer service, bartending, and proper food handling, and preparation in an effort to expand their job experience and skills for future careers. Today, I mark a transformative investment in the city's west side, one that will continue to serve its residents for years to come. And equally important, I look forward to working with you, Mayor, my colleagues, city agencies, corporations, and small business partners, as well as the residents as we envision the future moving forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. Alderman Oster, I'm sorry, the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. I just wanted to congratulate Alderman Mitz on the hard work that she's done on behalf of the residents of the west side in redevelopment of Chicago Avenue. Really, really great work that she's doing. We just want to support her and her efforts to make the west side continue to be the best side. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. Alderman, Chairman Osterman, I think you have a motion.
Make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Osterman. Next, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We had a virtual meeting on October 22, 2020, and the following item were passed by the committee. Item number zero-two-zero-two-zero dash four-eight-three-zero, an ordinance regarding city-issued business license required under Title IV and IX, and an emergent business permit issued under section four dash four dash zero-two-two of the municipal code, which expired on or after March 15, 2020 to be considered active and not subject to late fees until thirty days after a repeal date of March of December the 31st, 2020. Alderman Tunny and Riley. I move that the City Council incur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one on the Committee on the Finance Report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Alderman Tunny. I don't know if you want to speak to, or Alderman Hopkins, if you want to speak to this.
Madam Chairman, this is Alderman Tunny. Obviously, we as a council, by passing this ordinance, will send some degree of relief for those business permits. I know that this is a tough financial time for everybody, but I want to thank Alderman Riley and myself for listening to the business community because if businesses aren't open, they can't pay their fees and licenses and stay in business. And I think the most important thing we can do now is give every sense of relief to try to keep businesses with their door partially open, as you know, and hopefully reinvigorate them for the spring of 2021. These are some of the darkest times for businesses, and by passing this ordinance, I think we have some degree of empathy and knowing that we still have our own budgets to pass also. But thank you for consideration of this and look forward to continue to work with you, Mayor and the Council, on ways we can resuscitate small, medium, and large-sized businesses in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. I don't know if Alderman Hopkins or Alderman Riley want to speak to this.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. It is a small gesture, but it's an important gesture. And in the situation we find ourselves in, it may actually be the difference to some of the small businesses that we're trying to help. So it's symbolic of our commitment. We're going to continue to seek any type of relief that we can. You know, we, we don't have access to the resources from the federal government yet that we're anticipating may happen. We just don't know when. So in the meantime, it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can, no matter how small, to reach out to our business community and let them know we support them and we want to see them, like all of us, survive these challenging times. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Right, Chairman Mitz, you have a motion pending.
I move that the City Council incur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance Report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chairman Mitz, I think you meant to say by the same favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you. And there were six items, six ordinances regarding moratoriums in the 2nd, 9th, 35th, and the 44th Ward. I move of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Mitz. Next, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, November 12, 2020. Before the committee, there were 145 items. There were 145 routine traffic items that passed and zero routine traffic items that did not pass. I move the passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman. Hearing no objection, it will, these matters will be considered in the omnibus. Next up is the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Reporting, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held November 12, 2020. The following ordinances passed by a majority of the members present. Pages two through 29 include 325 ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by local aldermen from wards one through six, eight through 15, and nineteen through 50. On page 30 includes 16 ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards two, 10, 21, 25, 36, 42, 43, 45, and 47. On page 31 and 32 include one amendment and 14 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards one, three, eight, 16, 23, 25, 36, 38, 39, and 48. On page 33 include three vacation ordinances located in wards 20, 27, and 39. Page 33 includes one time extension ordinance located in the 42nd Ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee of Economic Capital and Technology Development and the associated unsuccessful motion in reaching center.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Brookins. Next up, the Committee on Workforce Development. Chairman Sodzowski Garza.
Madam President, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Good morning, Madam President and my illustrious City Council members. Reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on October 19, 2020. There was one item on the agenda, zero-two-zero-two-zero dash five-one-six-eight, the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of the Teamsters. Teamsters Local Union Number 700, zero-two-zero-two-zero dash five-one-six-eight, which was passed unanimously by a majority by a voice vote. Hearing no objection, I move the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance Report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Madam Chairman, I believe that you meant to say the first roll call vote of the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, is that correct?
Yes, you are correct, Madam President.
Right. Hearing no objection.
Old habits die hard. I apologize. You're absolutely correct. This concludes. No objection.
So ordered.
This concludes the report on the Committee on Workforce Development. Thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes committee reports. Next up, the Agreed Calendar. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the City Clerk Andrea Valencia a total of 48 items proposed for the Agreed Calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tribulatory resolutions from Mayor Lightfoot and the following aldermen. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Lopez. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Rodriguez. I move the passage of these on the Agreed Calendar.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, new business. Please call the roll, beginning with the first.
Wages, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access or parking facilities, which are referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Quinn has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burke has proposed orders for vacation of public waves in the area bounded by Southwestern Avenue, Indiana Harbor Belt, and Grand Trunk Railroad, South Campbell Avenue, and West 48th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Burke and Alderman Lopez have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code section eight dash four dash zero eighty-five to include immigration or citizenship status or gender identity as protected class under hate crimes legislation, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Lopez and Alderman Coleman have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapters four dash. have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapters four dash five, four dash three eighty-four, and seven dash twelve, by modifying various sections and adding new sections, four dash three eighty-four dash zero eighteen, and four dash three eighty-four dash zero twenty-five, concerning consumer protections on pet purchases, standards for qualified commercial breeders, and establishment of license fees and fines, which is referred to committee on health and human relations. Alderman Coleman has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Fifty-Nine Street, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Curtis has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section two dash thirty-two dash zero eighty-five, by modifying charitable organizations eligible for contributions from voluntary employee payroll deduction program, which is referred to committee on finance. Alderman O'Shea has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapters four dash six, four dash one fifty-six, and eight dash twelve, by modifying various sections and adding new section, four dash one fifty-six dash one sixty-five, to regulate video gaming terminals, which is referred to the committee on finance.
Licensing.
Do committees call the matters referred to the committee on committees and rules? Alderman O'Shea also has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as honorary Phil Doran Way, which is referred to committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at forty-two, twenty-eight, West Thirty-Fifth Place, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Sichu Lopez has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at twenty-three fifty-three Southwest Wentworth Avenue, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Sichu Lopez, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, title three, by adding a new chapter, three dash twenty, entitled Chicago Logistics Employers and Expense Tax and Development Incentive Ordinance, which is referred to committee on contracting.
Budget.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Budget.
Two committees having been called, the matters referred to the committee on committees and rules. Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Sichu Lopez, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed ordinance for termination of Canal Congress Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area, which is referred to committee on finance. Alderman Sichu Lopez, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed ordinance for termination of the Chicago Kingsbury Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area, which is referred to committee on finance. Alderman Sichu Lopez, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed ordinance for termination of the Kinsey Industrial Conservation Area Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Area, which is referred to the committee on finance. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Burnett also has proposed ordinance for release of plat of parking easement along North Carpenter Street between West Carroll Avenue and West Kinsey Street, which is referred to committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Cardona has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Wagas Pack and Alderman O'Shea have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter four dash eight, by adding a new section, four dash eight dash three hundred, to regulate third-party food delivery service fees, which is referred to a joint committee on finance and licensing consumer protection. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed orders for transfer of funds from the Chicago Police Department, item number zero-zero-zero-five, to the Department of Public Health for year twenty twenty-one to support mental health, mobile crisis response, and care services.
Public safety.
Which is referred to committee on the budget and government operations. I'm sorry, Alderman, I couldn't hear you.
Public safety.
Two committees having been called, the matters referred to the committee on rules. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at thirty-four, forty-four, North Kinsey Avenue, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Ramirez Rosa and others have proposed orders to call for removal of police personnel and officers out of Holman Square property located at one-zero-one-one South Holman Avenue.
Public safety, next Spazado.
Two committees having, which is referred to committee on budget, two committees having been called, the matters referred to the committee on rules. Alderman Spazado has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, sections four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged good licenses on portions of various public ways, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Nugent has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional packaged good licenses on portions of West Foster Avenue, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Nugent also has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional packaged good licenses on portion of North Elston Avenue, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Vasquez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Ravenswood Avenue, which is referred to committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Apolitano has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Tony has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section nine dash sixty-eight dash zero twenty, to allow fifteen-day grace period for expiration of residential zone parking daily permits, which is referred to committee on pedestrian and traffic safety. Alderman Tony also has proposed orders for issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Osterman has proposed orders for transfer of funds within the committee on housing and real estate for the year twenty twenty, which is referred to committee on the budget and government operations. Alderman Haddon and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, chapter two dash forty-four, by modifying section two dash forty-four dash zero eighty, regarding twenty fifteen affordable housing commitment, and adding a new section, twenty-two dash forty-four dash zero eighty-five, entitled Chicago Inclusive Housing Ordinance, which is referred to committee on housing and real estate. And Alderman Silverstein has proposed order for the issuance of permit for a signed signboard, which is referred to committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Your Honor, that concludes the automatic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Alderman Mitchell, for approval of the journal?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any corrections. I move to approve the journal for October, journals for October seventh, twenty twenty, and October twenty-first, twenty twenty. By the same.
Point of order, Madam, Madam President? The chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting. I, there was a matter that I was gonna, that I was introducing today, and Peter didn't read it. Can I talk to the staff about this? Thank you. I'd like it on the agenda for today, so, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, to, can, let me start with Alderman Smith. Can you describe the item and see if it was properly posted with the clerk's office?
Alderman Smith, could you please describe the matter that you're speaking about?
You're muted, you're muted.
It is a map amendment on a zoning matter in my ward.
Granted, we will record that. Zoning amendments are already recorded into the record, so that will be included.
All right. Thank you very much.
Alderman Mitchell, I believe that we were, you had moved for approval of the journal for October seventh and October twenty-first. Hearing no objection, so ordered. The motion is carried. Next is unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell?
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Thank you, sir. The next is miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell?
I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business either.
The date and time of the next council meeting?
Okay. I provided an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting for the city council for Monday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty, at two P M.
All right, so that's Monday, November twenty-third, at two P M. Madam Clerk, can you please read the ordinance?
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, section one, because an in-person meeting is not practical according to COVID-nineteen, the next regular meeting of the city council in accordance with applicable law shall be conducted by video conference on Monday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty, beginning at two P M., and shall provide for remote participation and remote viewing by members of the public. If prior to then, the commissioner of health issues a written determination that the city council can safely proceed with an in-person meeting, the meeting will be held at a location determined to safely accommodate a city council meeting. Any such written determination will post on the city clerk's website, along with an amended meeting agenda, which will include a fixed location by two P M. on Thursday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced by, from, and after its passage. Section, and be it ordained to the council of the city of Chicago. That's the end.
The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Yes, Madam President. Could she reread that? That was a little out of the ordinary or normal ordinance for the next meeting. Could she reread that, please?
Yes, but it's simply setting the next council meeting for Monday, the twenty-third, at two P M. But Madam Clerk, if you would.
But then, there's no Friday meeting then?
No, sir.
No Friday meeting? And there was some extra language. That was, that was the item that I was referring to.
It's providing for the possibility of an in-person meeting. That was the extra language, but given the current pandemic situation, we assume that this is going to be a virtual meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Madam President, is it the omnibus?
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, for the omnibus.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus to pass by the same roll call vote as we used in the term of the court.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. I motion that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for consideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The, the nays have it. The motion fails. Ladies and gentlemen, it is approximately eleven twenty-two A M. The city council will stand in recess until eleven-thirty, so approximately eight minutes, where we will begin the public hearing on the proposed executive budget. So let's take a short break, and then we'll be back with you promptly at eleven-thirty to start the public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
Mayor, I do have to read the notice of the public hearing first.
Madam Clerk, I believe you can do that at eleven-thirty.
Oh, you want to, okay.
Thank you. All right, we stand in recess. The chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Madam President, by the same roll call vote as we use to determine quorum, I move to go out of the regular order of business in order to conduct the public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. The time is now eleven-thirty-four. The clerk will read the notice of the public hearing.
The following official notice about public hearing on the budget document in the city of Chicago for the year twenty twenty-one was published in the Chicago Tribune on November sixth, twenty twenty. Public notice is hereby given that the executive budget of the city of Chicago for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, was received in the office of the city clerk from Mayor E. Lightfoot on October twenty-first, twenty twenty, and was submitted by the Honorable Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, to the city council, the city of Chicago, at special city council meeting held on October twenty-first, twenty twenty. The budget document is a pamphlet form available for inspection in the office of the city clerk and the Herald-Washington Library Center of the city of Chicago. Public notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on the executive budget will be held on Monday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty, at eleven-thirty A M., either at an in-person location or via remote means, with instructions for participation to be based online at www.shycityclerk.com. If you require specific language accommodations, including ASL interpreting, please call Office of the New Americans, I'm sorry, please email officeofnewamericans@cityofchicago.org by November eleventh, twenty twenty, dated at Chicago, Illinois, this dated at Chicago, Illinois, this sixth day of November twenty twenty. Andrea and Valencia, City Clerk, City of Chicago.
I have been provided with a list of individuals who signed up in advance to participate in the public hearing. I will call the list of witnesses. First up is Ephraim Martin. Mr. Martin, are you on the line?
Good morning to Mayor Lightfoot and members of the city council. My name is Ephraim Martin, representing the Black Heroes Matter Coalition of Organizations, again appealing for the wrongs to Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre, Chicago's founding father, to be corrected, and for the mayor and the city council to start the road to unsystemic racism in the Sabre's city of Chicago. The over one billion dollar budget shortfall facing the city can be understood with this current pandemic. Nevertheless, we'd like to ask that another one million dollars be added to that shortfall to give Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre a major monument for once and for all. Let me remind you that one hundred years ago, in the midst of the Spanish Flu pandemic, there was a struggle for equal rights for blacks in America and in Chicago for respect at a time when there was zero recognition for its founding father, the Sabre. The installation of a monument, a city, a city holiday, and a street in honor of the Sabre were among the honors demanded by the people over one hundred years ago. Mayor Lightfoot, since, since June of this year, we have been waiting for a written response from you to confirm the Sabre monument location, which we ask to be right there at the entrance of Grand Park and I D B Wells, and also along with the city council members to rename Lake Shore Drive as the Sabre Drive before the end of this year, twenty twenty. Further, to address our request for a full city holiday in honor of the phenomenal father of this city, what our requests are falling on this year. If your budget cannot, committee cannot find funds for the Sabre monument, our suggestion is that you take funds from the Department of Cultural Affairs, the police, transportation, and our other budget items, but we should no longer go without giving the Sabre a monument as streets on a holiday. In the interim, we have advocated a monument campaign at GoFundMe dot com under the Sabre Chicago to guarantee the Sabre receive its full respect. And given Tuesday, December first, will be our the Sabre Monument Fundraisathon, where we all can donate at blackheroesmatter.org. Our sincere thanks to all of you. Please stay in, stay safe, and of course, only go out if it's, if necessary. We thank you all. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Tremel Williams. Mr. Williams, are you there?
Please press star six.
Mr. Williams, if you are, if you are there, please press star six to unmute yourself. All right, we're going to go on to the next speaker. The next speaker is Val Zimonecki.
Madam Mayor, Val Zimonecki is not here.
All right, thank you. Next speaker is Alex Vallée.
Madam Mayor, Alex Vallée is not here either.
All right. Next speaker, Christopher Anderson. Mr. Anderson, you need to unmute yourself?
Hi, are you ready for Christopher Anderson now?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chairman, the city council at large, and Mayor Lightfoot, I'm Christopher J. Anderson, Director of Government Affairs for the Chicago Association of Realtors. And on behalf of our sixteen thousand members, I'm here to implore you to rethink your property tax hike. The budget of fiscal year twenty twenty-one is challenging, and there are few options. However, do not pick the worst, or the options remain. Government in this state is at a delicate balance. Just a few weeks ago, voters from across the state rejected the fair tax, a tax that allegedly benefited or would not hurt ninety-seven percent of the population. That tax was resoundingly defeated. Why? Because there's distrust of government, and people are tired of being taxed to death. A couple of years ago, on the other side of this building, a tax was introduced, and shortly thereafter rescinded. Taxpayers are revolting. They're doing it at the ballot box. They're doing it with protest. They're doing it with their feet. Population is dwindling. That is no secret. Post census, we only wait to see if we're going to lose one or two congressional seats. A property tax increase only chases. A property tax increase only chases more people away. Just a few weeks ago, you were not admonished, not by me or another trade association, but by a fellow Cook, uh, fellow elected official. Cook County Treasurer Maria Pappas recently released a 20-year property tax history report. From 2006 to 2019, Chicago property tax levy has seen an increase of 125%. The Cook, uh, the Chicago Board of Education has seen an increase of 62% during that same time, and this does not even include Cook County Government or MWRD. With the exception of a few neighborhoods downtown, north of downtown, and the West Loop, have any community seen 125% increase in value? I would think it would be hard pressed to find numbers that match that, and you probably wouldn't find numbers that match a 62% increase. Proposing future tax increases to inflation does not put the toothpaste back in the tube. Let me tell you my story. I purchased in 2009. I'm not in a racially concentrated area of poverty, and I'm steps away from two major bus lines. I recently had an appraisal. My value increased 30%. Not bad, but not great. But any value or wealth I'm accumulating in my left pocket is literally escaping out of my other pocket by paying property taxes. The average inflation rate in the United States of America from 2010 until now has been about 3% a year. If the cost of goods and services is rising by a small amount, why is the cost of government rising by such a staggering amount? Usually, I come before you and the other bodies to ask you not to do anything that's going to hurt private property rights or withhold development. A property tax of this degree can do both. We must find ways to keep Chicago as a destination for inbound investment. An increase in property taxes is a direct threat to those struggling due to COVID-19, pensioners, and eventually renters.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Next speaker, Alex Bustros. Mr. Bustros, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Greetings. My name is Alex Bustros, and I'm a constituent of the 46th Ward in the Lakeview Uptown area. Firstly, I stand in solidarity with Caitlin, the 13-year-old constituent who spoke at the beginning of this meeting. I'm here today to say that no matter how much you fund the Police Department, it will not stop this virus, nor the economic impact that it's having on our community members and our small businesses that are closing their doors forever. We need a major shift in priorities, as you, Mayor Lightfoot, announced that the city is averaging 1,900 new cases of COVID a day, with some areas seeing a positivity rate of 25%. Mayor and Alderman, this is a public health and safety issue and should be treated as such. Our Office of Emergency Management has 1,672 people. That's barely an eighth of our CPD employment. Our Department of Public Health has 488 people. This is a 26th of CPD. There are 13,411 people that work for the Police Department that haven't even at least been trained to provide necessary aid during this pandemic. Not only does CPD's bloated budget drain funding from our other programs, their officers' inability to wear masks, and according COVID-positive cases would indicate they caused multiple forms of harm without any meaningful protection for our city. I ask the City Council to vote no on the mayor's budget until the overfunding of the Police Department and the lack of funding for our other city departments is addressed. By de-funding CPD, the city's current reliance on cannabis tax revenue to avoid layoffs could be avoided. We could direct those funds to the Department of Public Health, Human Relations, Office of Disabilities, Family and Social Services, the Chicago Public Library. We could even go as far to invest the reparations program like being done in Evanston and Will County. I have attached to my submitted written testimony a graph from the Inspector General of Chicago's data portals that further illustrates the overfunding of our Police Department by comparing the personnel expenses next to that of our Fire Department and our other less funded services. City Council, we don't need to raise property taxes. We need to readjust our priorities, and we need to vote no on this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, next speaker is Eric Taylor. Mr. Taylor, are you with us? You'll need to unmute yourself by pushing star six.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, thanks for having me, Mayor Lightfoot, and the rest of the Council. Thanks so much. As Eric Taylor said, I'm calling on behalf of the, um, I'm part of the, um, Black Heroes Matter movement with Ephraim Martin, and I'd definitely like to see what could be done. I know it's so much stuff going on with pandemic and budget, stuff going on. Whatever can be done, if there's grants, there's space to put the statue, just something for our kids to grow up and know exactly the true history of what's been going on, and, uh, it's thank, it's thank you to like to hear it when it came up because I knew about the Sabre, but it was never nothing that was prominent when I was in school through that time. So it'd be something definitely, if you could, whatever you could do to move on that with the space and requirements, things like that, to, uh, that would be just, that would be just really just a delight for the people of Chicago to know the true history of what goes on, and, uh, definitely, um, just, you know, whatever you can do with space, and I send budgets everywhere. So if the space can be provided, if the street can be provided, things like that you can do, if you can, definitely appreciate it. And definitely want to say, I know it's been a tough job you've been doing so far, and, um, I definitely just, uh, you have my support on things you're doing, so, that's it.
Sir.
Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is Andrea Kluger. Ms. Kluger, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Kluger, and I'm the Director of Legislation and Politics for the Chicago Federation of Labor. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning. The Chicago Federation of Labor represents 300 affiliate unions, who in turn represent about half a million working women and men in Chicago and Cook County. Among our affiliates are dozens of unions who represent the public workers who serve the people of Chicago. These workers have been on the job since the pandemic began, often risking their own health and safety to ensure the city keeps running. These are 911 operators, streets and sanitation employees, public health experts, skilled tradespeople, and many more. As a city and as a nation, we owe these brave workers a debt of gratitude for their extraordinary work during this unimaginable crisis. Many of these workers have contracted COVID-19. Sadly, many have passed away. And to that end, I'd like to call now for a moment of silence to remember the public service workers who have passed during the pandemic. Thank you. For weeks, the Chicago Federation of Labor and its affiliates have been in discussions with the mayor's office and the city council to find ways to make sure we can support these workers and protect the vital services they provide. We understand that Chicago, like many state and governments across America, is facing an unprecedented fiscal challenge on top of the ongoing public health crisis. All along, the CFL has sought to work in a collaborative, productive way to find solutions to our shared problems. To that end, the CFL spent weeks collaborating with frontline workers, healthcare experts, and consultants to form recommendations of potential savings for the city, savings that could be used to avert layoffs of our heroic public workers. Over the weekend, we were proud to reach an agreement with Mayor Lightfoot to avert all union layoffs in the 2021 budget. Labor and the city are still working through the efficiency ideas proposed by the CFL last week, and we believe we can continue working together to find ongoing structural solutions to the city budget. This agreement means 350 workers will not lose their jobs during a global pandemic, keeping them on the job to provide the critical services that are needed now more than ever. Make no mistake, the CFL and its affiliates understand that this is an extremely difficult budgetary situation with no easy answers. We are eager to work with the city in future years to find funding sources and efficiencies for the city of Chicago. That being said, approving this pandemic budget is unquestionably the right step for Chicago. This budget protects our services and protects our workers while making the tough choices necessary to stabilize our city's finances. On behalf of the CFL, I urge the City Council to approve this budget and continue to move this city forward. There is certainly more work to do, but Chicago's unions stand ready to collaborate and compromise to meet the challenges ahead. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Kluger. Our next speaker is Adrian Alexander. Ms. Alexander, are you with us? You will need to push star mute to unmute your phone.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, Alderman. My name is Adrian Alexander. I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for APSME Council 31. APSME represents almost 4,000 city employees working in every city department. We're pleased to be here today, supportive of a budget that has no layoffs, ensuring that our members can continue providing the essential city services that so many residents rely on. We appreciate the work that many of you have done to lift up your concerns about laying off so many workers in the midst of the pandemic and helping us to get to this point. For months now, APSME has played a crucial role in the effort to secure additional COVID relief stimulus funding in Washington, D. C., and we continue, intend to continue these efforts until Congress does the right thing and passes legislation that can aid states and cities, small businesses, and the unemployed. However, given our city's ongoing revenue needs and the uncertainty of the timing and scope of such federal aid, APSME supports the revenue measures, including the modest property taxes increase, the increase on the lease transaction tax, and the responsible borrowing that are incorporated into this budget. In addition, our union works closely with the Chicago Federation of Labor in the development of their budget report, which is intended to point the way to additional savings and revenue sources that can help improve the city's financial prospects moving forward. We have provided all of you with a copy of this report and hope to work together with you in identifying further efficiencies. APSME members have played important roles throughout the pandemic, as contact tracer, tracers and epidemiologists, as library employees and DFSS staff serving the most vulnerable, as BACP employees making sure businesses are following the rules to keep us all safe, as essential service employees working in the police and fire departments, as engineering and support staff in the water department, and in many other critical roles that have kept Chicago working and working well in these unprecedented times. We're glad that with your support, they can keep doing this vital work. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Alexander. Um, before we go to our last speaker, I want to make sure that the people, other people who signed up are not with us. Uh, Mr. Tramel Williams? Mr. Williams, are you, uh, with us? Called your name?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright.
Yes, I'm here, Mayor Lightfoot.
Please proceed, sir.
Yes, greetings, Mayor Lightfoot and full City Council. My name is Tramel Williams, commenting on behalf of the Black Heroes Matters Coalition for the Sabre. Uh, simply, as this year of chaos, year of adversity, year of awakening, and more certainly a year of perpetual change comes to an end, we come to you with a reminder to heavily consider allocating a portion of the city's budget just to giving the city's founding fathers, as do in honor, the founding father Gene Baptiste Point du Sabre. Uh, as some of you may already know, our, our demands are simple and, and we feel that they are reasonable. Uh, number one, the renaming of Lake Shore Drive to be Gene Baptiste Point du Sabre Drive. Uh, our second initiative is the, is to give the founding father, uh, a full city holiday, not just a day of observation, as the City Council has, has approved in the past, but a full city holiday. Uh, last and most importantly, uh, and one of the things that, at the end of the day, even if we get the other two initiatives, this will be the icing on the cake, uh, is a major monument, a major monument, at least of 25 feet, to be erected in honor of the city's founding father. We strongly feel that, uh, no other individual deserves, and no other individuals should have a, a statue or a monument or sculpture erected in the city before the city's founding father, um, does. Uh, we feel no other time is better than now, and we just want to put that heavy reminder on your hearts. And we thank you, all the Aldermans and everyone in your, uh, just on the City Council and also in your administration that, uh, that supports our initiative, and we look forward to working with you guys in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, last call for, uh, Val Zimonecki. And last call for, um, Alex Vallée. Alright, our final speaker then is, uh, Lawrence Massal. Mr. Massal, you with us? You need to, uh, unmute your phone. There you are.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, Budget Chairman Dowell, Finance Chairman Wogus Beck, and all the members of the City Council. I am Lawrence Massal, the President of the Civic Federation, a nonpartisan government research organization whose members come from the major corporations, institutions, and service firms. Before starting on the budget, I want to commend Mayor Lightfoot and her team and all of the City Council for finding a way during this pandemic to carry out your work. Your decision to operate virtually using a, uh, technology platform and still allow for public input and transparency is not only appreciated, but we commend it. We would be much better served if our Illinois General Assembly followed your lead and started to carry out the work that is needed for the state. Civic Federation appreciates the opportunity to testify and share our support and concerns regarding the mayor's proposed $9.8 billion spending plan for fiscal year 2021. A full copy of the 111-page analysis has been sent to all of the council members and is available for free on our website at civicfed.org. The Civic Federation offers our qualified support for this budget because although we believe it is a reasonable plan, given the extreme economic conditions of our city, state, and country that we all face due to the COVID virus and the economic disruption, a very large part of this budget closing is surrounded with uncertainty. And that is the plan to restructure and refinance $1.7 billion of general obligation in sales tax securitization debt. Although this will provide significant budgetary relief, the Civic Federation is concerned about the impact on so, and so much reliance on large upfront savings from another round of debt transactions and other non-recurring revenues that are built into this budget. We call on the, the city and urge this body to make sure you fully understand and have the full details of how this will be a net present value savings for city taxpayers, not just the city taxpayers now, but our children going forward. The city is proposing $1.7 billion in restructuring. However, this isn't, not only an enormous transaction, it comes with risk. While interest rates are at a historic low, and it may be that financially prudent, it may be financially prudent to refinance that for economic savings, the debt restructuring that is proposed has a structure that depends on the maturity date.
One moment, Mr. Massal. Chairman Dowell, um, is there a motion to, um, allow for, uh, the continued testimony of this witness?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move that, uh, Lawrence Massal be allowed to finish his statement.
I hear no objection, so ordered. Uh, Mr. Massal, you may continue.
Thank you very much. This body has the ability and duty to fully understand and make sure that the public is fully aware and receives the benefit of all of the information in order to assess the risk associated with this transaction. The, the city is also in this budget relying on significant one-time revenue sources, including the TIPS surplus and drawing from the rainy day funds. But in all, in all, we agree with the mayor's approach of balancing the immediate needs of the city without harming the economically fragile condition of our city. This body needs to join in pushing our state legislature not only to meet, but to address one of the major causes of the financial challenges of the city. The property tax increase that is proposed by this body ma- can be justified in lieu of the limited other opportunities the city has to address its structural problem. But it begs you to recognize, we beg you to recognize, that of that $1.6 billion in property taxes, $1.4 billion in property taxes are going into the pension system. It may seem like a broken record that the Civic Federation continues to urge you to come up with a plan to deal with our pension liability, to get our state legislature to recognize it. It is because it is the financial challenge of this government and this body, and it can't be addressed by ignoring it, and it certainly is not being addressed by the General Assembly not meeting. The Civic Federation urges the property tax decision to recognize that, as the previous speakers have said, it is a very difficult time to be raising taxes, let alone property taxes. The decision to go with a recurring or automatic increase tied to the CPI is not supported by the Civic Federation. We believe this body every year needs to decide what it, it is required in terms of its taxes and its tax levy. In addition, recent developments and discussion about pledging the property tax proceeds to, um, to allow for more capital spending or additional debt needs much greater transparency and much greater detail. much greater detail. Finally, recent developments that have the city borrowing against unexpected revenues from the cannabis tax revenues needs much better transparency and, again, raises significant concerns for the Civic Federation. This body has to use unexpected revenue, any opportunities to structurally balance the city's budgets. Not going forward with the reductions in force is short-sighted, not just because we don't know if the federal government is going to come forward with additional revenue support, or any revenue support. The Civic Federation has strong support for additional federal revenue support for the City of Chicago, State of Illinois, and all cities and states in the United States, but the city is wise to not depend on that in order to balance this budget and recognize that you're under enormous pressure with the state law that requires a balanced budget to be established by the end of December, 2020. Thank you for this opportunity. As I said, I hope I said, the full 111-page analysis that the Civic Federation has provided is available on our website, and we are happy, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Massal. As always, we appreciate your very straightforward comments, and thank you for your assistance in helping us work through what, as you have acknowledged, is an extraordinarily difficult budget year. Chairman Dowell, is there a motion to return to the regular order of council business?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move to return to the regular order of business by the same roll call vote as was used to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The time is now 12:04. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, there being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the same roll call vote as was applied to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The motion is carried. Council is adjourned.